16 virtual meeting to order. We'll call Mary. Cameron Papaholzer.
Here.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Here.
Secretary Sienna.
Here.
Was that it here?
Yes, she's here.
Thank you. Janice Bolzama.
Here.
Vincent May.
President of the National Department of Labor at 7:30, he'll be here for half hour.
Okay. Marcy Natrio.
Here.
And Cynthia Rice.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are no visitors. Are there any comments coming through visitors? Scott, how do we know?
Uh, we have.
They're coming in the evening.
Now, Tracy will, because Tracy's on right now. So they'll come through Tracy and then I'll be able to.
Okay.
All right.
Um, approval of the minutes?
A motion to approve the minutes of the June 18th, 2020 Board of Education meeting as submitted. Second.
Discussion?
Uh, yeah, my meeting was just misspelled. I don't know if that's a big deal or not. It was on page 26. It was Caroline, L-I-N-E, instead of Carolyn.
Did you hear that, Mary?
I don't know.
So Carolyn's name was misspelled on page six. It's spelled Carol.
Page two.
Oh, sorry. Page two. It was spelled Caroline instead of Carolyn.
Sorry, Carolyn. That's all right. I don't even know if it's any big deal. If it's no big deal, then we'll fix it because it's ridiculous.
Only if you're gonna change your name. If not, we'll get it corrected.
All right. I just hate to go through all that if it's no big deal.
Can we have a roll call though of the minutes? Cameron Papaholzer.
Approved, yes.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yeah, approved, yes.
Secretary Sienna.
Yes.
Janice Bolzama.
Yes.
Vincent May.
Yes.
Marcy Natrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Rice.
Yes.
The superintendent has received a retirement resignation from Ms. Mary Ann Valenzuela, mathematics teacher at North Ramper Elementary School effective June 30th, 2020. After 25 years of dedicated service to the students at North Ramper.
So move to accept the resignation?
Discussion?
Second. Second.
Janice seconded Marcy's name in motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The superintendent has received a resignation from Ms. Lawrence Zeldis, world language teacher at North Ramper High School effective July 8th, 2020.
I make a motion to approve the resignation of Ms. Laura Zeldis, world language teacher from Ramper High School effective July 8th, 2020.
I'll second.
Uh, second.
Janice second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim?
Just one more.
On the sheet, Jim. Scratch this here and put it down.
The superintendent has received a resignation from Mr. Jeremy Rice, grade five teacher at Totucket Valley Elementary School effective July 15th, 2020.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the resignation of Mr. Jeremy Rice to approve the... It says approve twice, but it wasn't made. Okay. To approve the resignations for Jeremy Rice, uh, grade five teacher at Totucket Valley Elementary School effective July 15th, 2020. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appointments, the agenda item B. Where is that agenda item B?
It's under superintendent's report. The authority to hire.
I have a list of, um...
Do you want, do you want to just do it?
And I can do that under my report.
Okay, so then we can move to...
All right. Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, we're gonna start off with, uh, Ms. Vaughn, Director of Personal Business. She's gonna review and update the budget information for you. And if she has to hand out, she'll do so at this time.
Right, so, um, either you've received electronically the budget report or I also handed out the, um, paper version for you here. Um, this is the 1920, um, report. I just want to make sure you understand this number is not final. Um, we did end the, um, year so far, and I'm gonna say a draft version, um, with 13,006 remaining. I do anticipate that this amount will increase because, um, as we go through purchase orders and close out for things that were never received or, um, things that were canceled because school didn't happen, um, I do anticipate that that number will increase. So I will have a better idea for you, um, at our next meeting, what the actual, um, ending number for 1920 is. We've been, um, very busy, um, this past month. Purchase, um, processing a lot of payrolls. Uh, just so you understand the amount of transactions that goes through in the month of June, we, um, did eight payrolls in the month of June. Um, two for our regular, um, 12-month staff and one for stipends. The rest were for, uh, teacher's final pay, either their summer or balloon checks. And then we also did a final hourly payroll, um, for June 30th. So in the past, what would happen is those hours that, uh, hourly people, such as maybe a sub custodian worked, um, in June, were actually brought over and paid out of July money. Um, your expenditures should be reflected in the year that they were incurred. So we ran another payroll at the end of June and made sure that those expenditures were actually recorded in, um, 1920. We also did open enrollment for health insurance benefits and the, uh, medical buyback. And we're gonna start a new process of invoicing retirees, um, for their health insurance. Right now, it, um, it's been spotty. Um, but by putting in a full accounts receivable, we'll get a better idea of accuracy and, um, what is exactly owed. Uh, we continue to expand the process of, um, organizing our, uh, different deductions and things. And, um, we hope that as the months progress, uh, things will get easier for us. And of course, next month, as I said, um, you'll get two financial reports. One for the beginning of 2021 and one, um, which will be a little more, uh, final for 1920. And then, just so you know, where we're going ahead, I'm gonna take, um, the grants that is now currently done through QuickBooks and we're gonna begin the transition over into Alia, our financial system, so that we can process all of our grant transactions, payroll and purchase orders through the financial system. They'll go through the same processes, be subject to the same internal controls, and, um, it'll eliminate a lot of redundancy and, um, confusion over which, um, process goes to which, uh, transaction. It'll also actually allow us to, um, provide a more complete set of financial records to the auditors when they come, um, during the year. So that's just a basic overview. If anybody has any questions?
I do.
Yes.
Um, so when the grants get transitioned over, will they be included in our monthly financial report?
Yes, I will be able to actually run you a separate report for grants. Um, it will be separate from, um, the general fund, but it'll look very similar. Yep.
And, um, my second question was, how are we looking with our carryover? What, like 13,000 doesn't look great?
Well, don't forget, we already set aside the 640 rate.
I just wanna hear again.
Yep, absolutely. We did set that aside, so, um, that's already taken care of.
Yeah, I was like, oh, that seems a little low, but maybe I am wrong.
And actually, if you wanna see that, um, the report, so if you turn to the last page, um, the very last eight, nine where it says capital, you're gonna see a minus 645. And that 643, 714 in the encumference column, that's your 2% carryover.
Got it. That's very perfect.
Thank you. I have one, I have one quick question. Um, I know we, um, approved and supposed to be getting a new accounting system that will be in conjunction with the town. Is that ordered or where are we at with that?
I have not heard any updates from, um, Anthony, but I will certainly reach out to him and, and see where we are with that. Um, I think because of the whole COVID thing.
Yeah, 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 things kind of...
It kinda, yeah, got put on the back burner, but I will definitely check.
No, that's understandable. That's fine.
You know, Martha, one of the things I might gently suggest for you, Anthony and Mike Paul was to do is get together after the issue that happened last week with this communication and, um, the report about centralizing various departments. I think it's time for the town and the board and the various leaders between the Board of Ed and the town to get together so we can go through that report and we can systematically figure out how we're gonna roll that out so that there's no surprise. And I think part of that is the system because if we have a system that can talk, it only works if you talk.
Yes, yes, and I, I completely agree with you. And I believe not only the financial system, but communication on both of our ends is key.
Yeah.
And in the beginning of the winter, um, actually Anthony and Anita came out and we developed a monthly reconciliation system between our books and the town.
Our books.
So we are actually working more collaboratively now than we were even less than a year ago.
Oh, that's something to hear.
So we're trying, we're trying to build that relationship and, and make it easier because it'd just be easier for us and them as well.
But that's something we should follow up on.
Absolutely.
I don't think I could arrange the meeting. I don't know if you can, if Scott can.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I suggested it.
Yeah, okay.
Before we do move on, Martha, did you just have the update to be on time sheets in the district and the use of time sheets and how that will happen?
So as of July 1st, all of our hourly, non-exempt employees, meaning those who, um, would receive overtime if they worked over 40 hours, um, are now required to, under Department of Labor, fill out a time sheet. And the time sheet would show the, when they came in, when they prayed for lunch, and then when they leave for the day. And it would, it's a bi-weekly time sheet that they have to submit. Um, there are two different schedules, one for 12-month people and one for 10-month people. So we sent out so they know exactly when they need to submit the time sheet in order for us to, um, pay. So that's gonna start us on a, um, record-keeping system so we know, um, that they're actually working what they're being paid. And also, um, for their protection as well, if they're working and need to be paid overtime, then they should rightfully be paid overtime.
So is this everybody but teachers, basically?
So anybody, anybody who is, um, considered hourly. So that would be your secretaries, custodians, paraprofessionals, cafeteria workers, um, nurses, uh, greeters, security. So your, your, um, exempt people are your teachers, your administrators, um, myself, Scott.
We're also looking to mechanize the system as we progress through. So it is computerized. There won't be any paper sheets. When that employee comes in, it'll be through the computer. And we're in the process now with a terrible person who's had experience with this rolling back.
But this is the baby step before, before we can run, we have to crawl, so.
Any questions for Ms. Vaughn? You want, Martha, did you have anything else?
I don't.
Okay. Uh, under authority to hire, as you know, uh, before we broke for the summer break, it seems to be the summer that won't end. We had a number of positions that we currently filled. Our administrators have done a wonderful job, uh, under these conditions. One, getting very large applicant pools. We had over 90 and 100 applicants for, uh, a number of our positions. They did a lot of student interviews and were able to then, uh, bring people in for live interviews in a very controlled environment. So, um, we're happy to give you the list. You should have that in front of you. As you know, we had hired two school psychologists, uh, prior to the birth of it. We hired a math teacher at the high school, social studies at the high school, three, two, for one year, uh, language arts at the, uh, intermediate school. We hired the behavior analyst. Um, and we hired the mathematics teacher at NDIS as well. Uh, we're obviously in the process now of interviewing a Spanish teacher who approved that resignation this evening. Uh, that person is relocating to Florida. It was very difficult for her to, to, to write that letter because she really had a great, um, experience in North Ramper. Um, and obviously with the fifth grade, uh, reservation group, and I will start that process. And I know that Dr. Welch has already started that. So, uh, we have some transfers internally. Those are listed below. Uh, and where they are going and where they were. So certain ones can go to high school. Lauren Miller, uh, special ed to Jerome from the high school. Kristy Scanlon, special ed, uh, to the high school from the intermediate school. And Jackie Thurston is gonna go up to, uh, the high school from TDS. Okay, and those are all, uh, posted openings and then the internal people request and, uh, move. Any questions on that? Okay, uh, the school real life plan, I'm gonna, we're really gonna be, um, as efficient and concise because to be quite honest with you, I, if you ask me this evening if I had a real strong, um, feeling for what's gonna happen on day one, I think I'm getting a little more, um, anxious as we get closer and I see other states that are around us and what is happening. Uh, I know there was a conference call this evening and there was a lot of talk from, uh, superintendents about a hybrid schedule. So what we were charged with doing under the adopted advanced sheet was to come up with three plans. One was, uh, what, what I'm planning on right now in North Ramper is to go back to school on the scheduled first day during the scheduled times that we run, using our transportation for 177 days, um, and running according to that model. We will also have to develop a hybrid model, which would be a combination of live teaching in the school building and at-home distance learning, um, teaching and instruction.
When is that implemented?
That's only if we're told we have to go there. The third piece is no one comes on campus and it stays as distance learning, which was what we went into March 12th. So we have to submit to the state on the 24th, uh, our plans.
From July or August?
Oh, July.
I know that sounds...
July, next week.
That works.
Sorry. And I have to tell you this. So we received this, there's the template here. Every building administrator worked with their COVID team to develop plans. They submitted them to me this past Wednesday. I selected Carter Welch, Dr. Welch, to be my, um, liaison. You have the district has to have a liaison that oversees the health and wellness for the schools and courts with the committee. So, um, as you know, Carter heads up the wellness committee. Uh, so he is gonna be, uh, the designated, uh, to, to handle a lot of the communications and things that, uh... So every school works independently, uh, and has to develop their own plan because obviously with the different age groups, they're going to look different between the 5-year-old and the 17-year-old. So that being said, uh, Dr. Welch has been working with the administrators. Uh, Tracy Moon is in charge of, obviously, the curriculums, but then picking up somebody. All of the, uh, I'm guessing it depends. All of the, um, distance learning as well. So we have to submit detailed plans, uh, which she is working on, which would be our distance learning phase three, okay? So this is a lot of work. Obviously, a lot of work going on right now. We have been purchasing, based upon this recommendation, over $100,000 worth of materials to get ready for this. So what that can look like would be Plexiglas, um, additional desk for the kindergartners. Now we have them at tables. Now we have to put them at desks. So, and Martha's gonna go through that. But I, I just want you to understand that the amount of work preparing for this right now, and we're six weeks away. And I'm, I'm, I'm just getting anxious with the way things are starting to, to turn and go around us. So if you ask me, what's, what's your best estimate on what's gonna happen? I, I really don't know. Two weeks ago, I, I thought differently. Our plan is to pull the buses up in front, get the children on in a safe manner, get them to school, and then, um, take action within our ability to do this as best we possibly can to, um, distance and educate them live in front of a teacher.
So is that the plan we're submitting or we have to submit all?
All three. You have to submit all three. So we have no... We won't do any of that. So they've been working diligently on that. So that being said, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Carter...
I saw them have a question for you.
Okay.
So, and then I'll have a ton of questions for her. But, um, if we go back live, I'm sure there's families that are gonna be uncomfortable coming back.
Yes.
Are we allowed to do all live and distance learning for those kids?
So from our poll, uh, we, we put about 1,700 questionnaires out and we've gotten, uh, 1,000...
For parents, 12, 18...
12, 18 back. So the breakdown right now roughly, and I don't want anyone to think, about 70% of the people are planning on coming back. The 30% that opted, and, and, and we're gonna repoll again. I don't want anyone to think the 30% that hit, checked the no box, we have to provide a, an appropriate education for them, which we deem is, you know, um, similar, but not the same as being in class. We can't do that. We are gonna repoll the target population. We're gonna author, Carter and I will author with Tracy a letter showing a, a lot of the strategies that are in place. A lot of people have no idea the lengths that we've gone to to prepare at least 12 beds. We're then gonna give them another box, "I'm not sure." Because I, what we're thinking is that some of the 30% is really not sure what they're gonna do and they're, they're waiting to see what's gonna happen. So we'll put that out. We're also gonna do, um, a, a, a live roundtable. We'll go and, and do fireside chats through Zoom meetings. And I think we're looking at late next week with a following, we'll, we'll put it out there. Uh, so we can start to dial all the parents and answer those questions. So the answer to, to your question was yes. The 30% or whatever percent that doesn't come back, we're gonna educate our kids in the building live. Then we'll have to put something in place. It could be a live video camera in the back of the classroom and the student is sitting at home and, and they know that Mr. Williams is sitting behind me. We have pre-purchased and purchased a number of, um, pieces of equipment that will move to motion and to the teacher. So they will log on and watch that from the back of the class.
No questions, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
What's the learning hub that was referenced? The state learning hub that was referenced? I saw a lot of questions about it.
Yeah.
Uh, and I just didn't really know what that is.
In an effort to support school districts with the different modes and varieties of, of education that they will need to provide, the state has a collection of resources that can be used in lieu of in-person learning and supported by a school district. So that is, there are curriculums for science or language arts or reading. They are not ours, but they are resources that translate very well into a distance learning model. So the state has said to us it's acceptable for us to have parents and children use that with our support. That is not what we have decided to do, but that is an option, it's a viable option from the state.
So the learning hub isn't distance learning from the school?
It is a collection of resources that support distance learning.
So would that be like, I'm just trying to figure it out because I know a lot of people are asking about it. Is it like homeschooling, like if a parent chose to homeschool? Or is it just...
Well, oh, totally. Like Pearson does put out a product for homeschooling that is similar to what's on the hub. So it is resources that you could use at home. So instead of us, like we said, there are videos on it, there are routines on it, there are materials on it. So you could use that to implement a full curriculum for a child that's not in the building that's on.
So the, the problem is, is that we have our curriculum. So if a student is out for three months in a canned hub curriculum that doesn't align, it doesn't progress them according to our curriculum, this is gonna be really difficult to manage for those students to trans, transfer back into an active curriculum that's been going on live in a classroom with a teacher. You can't replicate having a teacher in a classroom building with kids. And anyone who, and I'll say this, tries to make that argument, I, I would love to have that interview students and teachers and now parents. So...
I have a question. On the people who returned the survey staff, do we have a breakdown? How many responded from Ron Harrison? How many responded from TDS? How many responded from North Ramper intermediate? How many responded from the high school?
Yeah, so this is basic. So what, what the survey allowed the parent to do was check off multiple family members and then specifically by grade and building that their child was in so that we could disaggregate that information and we know we've got five fifth graders and eight sixth graders. And so, yes.
So we have a...
We do.
Okay, I, I don't keep them like we have to talk to you, that'll get... What that information is to see response? Now, what parents are more concerned about versus what they do, uh, when the parents respond to them?
Okay, and once the closing meeting on that is...
The survey closed last evening, so I won't have, we will have all that. Um, I will go over it with Scott, Carter, and then they will send it to buildings and then from there, um, we'll have a report, be able to go out on all of these metrics that were used.
Yeah, they can just put it on email and they get to call somebody who needs to school. Uh, this way, the board members have a here, okay? What parents are responding and, um, certainly help us decide we have to take, uh, make a product.
Okay, and, and I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to Carter. We are going to resurvey. Uh, we put this together over a week ago and now there's a lot of moving parts and things that we've done that we want parents to be aware of. We wanna educate parents on, you know, little things like slot wash sinks, hand sanitation areas, um, breaks and taking kids and doing a lot of things outdoors and really trying to actively engage our students in different learning models that align with the CDC and the health departments that, um, I think will give, I'm hoping will give parents a sense of, not only confidence, but comfort in knowing that we're really working diligently to, um, protect our students, protect our staff. I've ordered 300 full face shields, uh, for our teaching staff. I've ordered 300 face covers for our teaching staff. Uh, so we're, we're trying to get the word out there that we're doing everything that we possibly can, um, to give people a peace of mind. Yes.
Now, I, um, you surveyed the parents and whatnot. I mean, what about the staff? Is the majority of the staff, like, are they okay, like, you know, are they okay coming back? Are they concerned?
Well, they, they are concerned. We surveyed them.
That's not closed yet.
That's still... So we did the parents first. That was our biggest target group. And then there's, there's legal language with what we can do with, um, staff members who are not comfortable coming back. And I really don't wanna go into that...
Okay.
Too much, other than, um, we're trying to ensure our staff that, in, in my opinion, that, um, they're essential workers. Our teachers are the lifeblood of any school district. They're the most important people that we have and, and we're gonna do everything to give them that confidence. And if they can't because of reason A, B, and C, we're gonna do our best to work with them to make sure that they're still productive members and still instructing students in some capacity.
Okay, thank you. Scott, are we gonna need more busing, um, more buses for this?
No, you know, and that was my big worry at first. Uh, but they've really, they've really lessened the, um, requirements for transportation. So we did put out on that parent question, will you be putting your child on the bus? We're, we're gonna see trends where more parents are gonna drive their children, which is gonna drop the, the, um, bus population. But the kids will be masked, the driver will be masked, they'll be sanitized between everyone. So there's a number of things in place, but they're really being flexible with allowing us to keep with the number of buses we have because that could destroy the budget. You know, we do about $1 million in transportation, which is, that averages about 30,000 per bus at our 30 buses that we run. So if, if we were charged with starting to add buses in capacity to 50%, it could, it would obviously double. Where would we get $1 million?
Right, that's, yeah, that's what I was worried about when you said busing. I was like, oh, boy.
No, so we're okay here.
As of right now. It can change that.
Anything can change. That's my anxious feeling.
Yeah, I hear you.
All right, Carter, I'll stop talking now.
Well, as you can see, and everybody knows this is a hot topic. Um, you can't get away from it in the media, it's parents and questions. You can't get away from it in the media, it's parents and questions, and we could go for hours talking about the very different scenarios and the things that are concerning and worrisome to parents, students, and staff. I think our first charge, right now, we've worked on the reopening plan, to know, of course, that we have the other two versions that we need to submit, but every building has hit the ground running with establishing a reopening plan. What does that look like if all the kids and all the staff are coming back? So that's been our major goal, and that's founded on, if you look at the state plan, they have guidelines and they have recommendations and they have requirements. So the requirements, we're absolutely putting in place in all buildings. That's a have to, and those are pretty straightforward. The recommendations are things that are best practices, and we're doing our best in all the buildings to put those in place. Those are things like social distancing. So obviously, different buildings present different problems with social distancing. We have the six-foot guideline, which is recommended by CDC, AKA the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends the three-foot. So we're doing our best to meet the six feet, but that's going to not happen in some places. And that's something that we'll communicate very directly and openly with parents when we have the plans up. You also have social distancing in the hallways within the transition period, entering the building. So we're talking about changing arrival time, scattering things to allow that to happen. We're hand sanitizing constantly for students and staff entering and exiting the building. We're sanitizing constantly in the building, so custodians, teachers supporting that, administration supporting that, everyone all hands on deck, making sure that rooms are sanitized and clean and surfaces are wet. In addition to that, we're expecting everyone to wear a mask. That's a guideline in the state of Connecticut, so all students and all staff who wear masks when they're in the building. That presents other problems that obviously Scott spoke about, that we'll need to provide transitions for time for mask breaks and getting kids outdoors, particularly the elementary level, getting the fresh air, getting outside, allowing them to take the masks off and being really distanced beyond what we can do in a physical structure. We've added the hand washing in there, so specific times and breaks to do hand washing in the building and sanitizing. So at the, you know, when you add all these transitions, keeping in mind in the hallway, you wanna limit mixing of kids. So in the elementary schools K through five, we have a cohorting model, so we're keeping the whole room of kids together, so they're not interacting with other kids at any point during the day. In order to do that, we're really protracted about transition times in the hallway and traffic. So there's a lot of planning. There's gonna be lots of instructional time to meet those guidelines for sure. And teachers are gonna be scrambling all day long to kind of make sure those things are happening and keep it to a clock, but it's doable. It's something that we're gonna work on. Obviously, the secondary level, some of those things are a real challenge, and coordinating is not possible unless you destroy your comprehensive offerings. So the high school will attack that a little bit differently. They'll have other plans in place. They'll do the same kinds of things of maximizing the spacing in the rooms. All our classrooms are looking at furniture arrangements and getting rid of a lot of excess things that don't necessarily need to be there, or teaching materials, storing those in different places. So it's really about the students, spread out as much as possible. Students will all be facing the same direction, so things like flexible seating arrangements and different things that we know are good for student learning and engagement are kind of at the window in this model, because we're talking about health and safety. So these are things that, as we develop these plans, we know parents and guardians are looking for these answers to say, well, I don't know if I'm saying I can come back to school until I kind of know what it looks like. So that's the next phase, is to get that information out to them, to be real with them about, here are the things that we're doing. Here are the things that we would love to do if we could, but within our task of reopening before go and not having additional staff or a staggered hybrid model, where some kids are in the building and some kids are at home, there are going to be some real challenges to that, and we're not gonna meet every one of those demands in every building, knowing the structure. That said, I think the surveying piece is really important. We've collected that initial information against a theme, so we're gonna follow that up now with, now that you've got more information, what do you think, do you feel better about certain things? Are you really concerned about the social distancing? Are you concerned that a young child are wearing masks all day? Are you concerned about cross-contamination? So we'll kind of parse that out and get a lot more information, and we'll, like Scott said, we're gonna hit the ground and do some town hall style meetings where parents can hear from us, ask questions, we can answer things, and that's a real important communication piece to get that out there, and certainly for students at the, you know, the middle and high school, and really get that out to students as well. I think when you talk about the hybrid and the distance learning model, I think we're probably more comfortable and ready for planning a distance learning model. That's not a far stretch from what we had in place. Obviously, we'll ramp that up in terms of rigor and availability and expectation for students and staff, but I think the hybrid is probably the biggest challenge of what's in between. So we haven't hit that yet, because all of our efforts are on the reopening phase. So that's kind of our next task to look at what that might look like.
Carter, will these plans be available for parents to read once they're submitted?
Yeah, so we have nearly comprehensive building plans that are, we're talking thirty-page documents that are very detailed. And then the district will kind of build one that's more of a summary, really adding the name points. I think the district plan is probably what will be shared out.
We're putting it on our site. So here, I wanna just jump in. So, part of the charge, and Carter's working with Bruce, is that we're gonna keep a lot of communications on our site and then documents like that readily available for anyone that wants to click and go through and see that, that's important. And then a link for questions that you may have as part of that communication to all parents in the building. The other piece, we talked about congligence in the buildings. What we're looking to do right now, and I'm trying to work agreement through with our custodians, we're looking at placing four individuals, one per school, for probably five and a half hours per day, sanitizing buildings, walking around hourly rate for the first probably three months of school. We did get some grant money back, I recovered that. And it's something that we were talking about the last couple of weeks, we've been developing and posting for, that we're also looking at overlapping and bringing the second shift employees in earlier, so that we have up to three people in the building cleaning while the students are there. And we think that's gonna give confidence to parents and to staff and to students that we usually run with one day custodian. If we triple that and have three in the building, and they're visible, and they're out there, and they're spraying, and they're wiping, and they're constantly cleaning, we think that's a pretty progressive proactive way to ease some of the anxiety over building cleanliness.
Just back to my original question. So, all of the schools' documents that are going to the state will be on the school site?
Or district. So the document to the state is a district plan?
One, one big.
So we know it will be on the district. Then you'll have like embedded versions?
Yeah, so well, Jerome's will have.
That goes out kind of like in a memo to parents?
Yeah, it can be on their site. So their school site, it can be right there, they can click to it, and the whole document will be there. And that's the nuts and bolts and the guts of how we're running schools.
As a building principal, I would say yes, I would scale that down to a really user-friendly version of here are the hybrids, here are the things that we can account on, here are the things that are challenges for us that, you know, we're doing the best that we can.
Yeah, got it, okay.
It's user-friendly for people.
And it pertains to their school, okay.
Right.
And Carter, are you responsible for the kind of health and safety for all of the schools and working with the administration on that school?
And fielding questions from parents and community members on that too.
Thank you for taking that on.
Yeah, you really have a choice. I had a very short conversation. Congratulations.
Shawna, just for the record, I know people see me texting. I'm updating Mary, because Mary's having a little difficulty here, so she's texting me and asking me. Are they talking about, I don't want people to think I'm texting. I'm just kind of filling her in on that, so.
Um, Carter?
One quick thing, then I'll answer that. I wanted to add too, that in addition to all kind of the structural, the health and safety things that are really important that we're doing, I want everyone to know that there's comprehensive efforts too in every building to deal with kind of social emotional learning, kind of the emotionality of this, and kids coming back to school, and what place are they in? How are we helping them process those emotions? How are we helping deal with anxiety? How are we helping little kids understand, you know, I can't even see your face, are you happy or sad when you're talking to me? Like, so those are things that we have really thoughtful plans in place, and every building is adding that into either a morning meeting structure, advisory time, you know, prior to the schedule in the PNBIS of flex time. Those are all things that are thoughtfully done, so the whole child is, it's not just the health and safety piece, it's the academic and it's the social emotional piece as well.
And then, a lot of that's probably the most important piece of the document going back, that we put everything on the back burner, the academic components, to make sure that our kids feel safe and cared for when they come back in with our teachers. That's gonna be the primary focus, and so we're able to then get back into a routine, because we don't know what's been going on for many of these children, you know, while they've been separated from their peers and teachers.
Well, one of the things I've written here was that the state suggested bringing the small cohorts in before school started and let them kind of look around who's in their class and just to walk through the classroom and the routine of wearing the mask and what would be done. Is that in the works, or no?
What I can tell you is I think that's more of a building-based decision. I can maybe highlight what TBS is doing. So we're doing that for any new student for sure, as part of our orientation. Come in in small groups, meet their classroom teacher, and kind of spend some time and do kind of what they would have done traditionally in a large group set. In addition to that, I've made myself available to really anybody to do tours, and I've had quite a few of those already in July. Just one parent, one child kind of walking through the building with masks on, talking, and just getting comfortable.
So I think the suggestion was to bring like, put class in before school started, I think more Jerome kids, more so than them.
What's one of the challenges about that? Right now, we're team cleaning buildings. So, we switched our summer cleaning model because of COVID, and and now we're breaking down one building at a time, so we're shifting and moving based on, really, have air conditioning and trying to make it as, you know, comfortable as possible for them. So some of the buildings won't probably be done, Bill, I don't want to push on the spot, but I'll refer.
We are.
Right from the beginning? Right to the end. With the deep clean, because we're trying to clean out in a pretty much different manner than we've done at. So for any new students to the district, certainly, I think those first three days of kids coming back, I really don't think that there's gonna be
Not a lot.
much instruction on how. I think we're, yeah, we're gonna just be reacquainting friendships with kids and really focusing on their wellbeing. But I, it's a good point, and there's a number of things in there that, in theory, but then when we look at everything we're doing just to get these buildings open on time with everything that's in here, it's a challenge to do.
Other things that were asked of me, my parents. So the cleaning is going to be different? Is it going to be stronger than the, I know they haven't do the eco-friendly, it's gonna be stronger?
Yeah, there's gonna be, we've had some flexibility in the use of bleach and other non-greedy cleaners. I purchased ten backpack spray machines, so we'll have two per building. We have five hand sanitizer machines that we'll be using that are tablets. So we've upped our ability to do large areas with these machines, and we'll be using stronger disinfectants.
So. The other thing was brought up to me, distant learning, that some classrooms had like a morning meeting, they met with the teacher every morning, some met once a week, and it made a difference. Some checked in in the morning and then the afternoon, which probably would be the better way to go. So just something to think about, the inconsistency that was going on.
Well, I can, I'm on record saying this, if we're forced, forced forced to close the buildings again and do distance learning, it's gonna look very different. And it's gonna be a great deal of live teaching going on with lots of time scheduled, that it will be, and it's not like being in school, but it will be very different than what they were used to. And Tracy's charged with that, and I know we're on the same page, and she's already in the process of developing a pre-K-12 continuum of what that would look like.
And most like the Google that was done from TBS, but the CSO not so much for the younger kids. And I guess the last thing is, what happens? What would be the plan? Someone in the family gets COVID, the kids in school, or someone in school teacher, or somebody in school gets COVID. What's gonna happen? Does that classroom close down for fourteen days?
So.
What's gonna happen?
I was on the Zoom, I do Zoom meetings every week with East Shore Health and the emergency service people in the community. So, you know, I have very different, I won't say opinions, but thoughts on what that would look like, because if you have a child that is symptomatic but not tested positive, and you're sending that child out for fourteen days not knowing availability to test, how long that would come back. These are all things that we're not really giving definitive answers on right now, because that means the teacher would have to go out for fourteen days, everyone in the class, who's on the bus with that child. So these things are, you know, this is what we're trying to grapple with, and we know it's gonna happen. You hear about the availability now to get a fifteen-minute test result. The accuracy, I know, is in question, but you know, this is advancing rapidly, so that would certainly come into place. I'm not looking to have my nurses do testing, because a lot of parents who wouldn't want, you know, I personally wouldn't want, and that's not enough.
I know a lot of kids though, that don't want that thing stuck up their nose.
It's swapped, but it's much different than before, when, you know, when you wait three days.
Before was like, oh, wait, you go first.
Yeah.
I had to have a procedure and I had to have the testing before the procedure, and it was like, yeah, with the.
Right, and you have to realize, we're gonna be going into flu season in October, though.
So.
We're gonna be having to, you know, typically mosquitoes coming back in another five. Life is gonna continue on.
So what are you doing with sick days? Like, what are you gonna do for sick days? Normally, only, a student only gets a certain amount of sick days. Now, if we don't want these kids to go in with the sniffles because we don't know, I mean, now it's like serious if your kid's slightly ill. Like, sometimes my kid has a sniffle, I go, go to school, you're not really sick. But now, if I don't know, like, I think it's allergies, but maybe it's not, like, so I wanna keep him home to protect the school, to protect my son. But, oh wait, he already has five sick days. If I use up another one, how are we gonna do that?
Flexible. If your child is sick and not, you want to keep your child home. And, you know, the number that we use as one hundred point three, and taking their temperature at home, if you think it and you're questioning it, you know, keep them home. But this is the type of thing that, when we have conversations with the health department, that the understanding of the impact of that, you know, on a regular day in a high school of five hundred kids or four hundred, you might have forty to fifty kids traveling through that nursing office, and that's an eight-hour day.
Are you gonna screen them when they come in? Are you checking their temperature? You're telling me you have to?
No.
I thought in here it said like that was a policy.
They don't last.
Oh, okay, I read it wrong, I guess.
And, and, temperature check.
Are they doing it to all the kids when they come on to campus?
No, no. So everyone's coming on, it's the responsibility of a parent guardian to do that, and which is a big relief for us, because you're trying to get four hundred or five hundred kids and taking temperatures in multiple stations, and then who's taking the temperature would be chaos. So it's not, that's not something to say.
What about staff? I mean, they're saying kids aren't really getting sick. The adults can be asymptomatic. What about teachers? Would they be required to have their temperature?
If they're feeling, you know, we have the nursing, we had, we purchased sixteen, you know, thermal imaging thermometers, so we have the ability to test the teacher for a fever and then send them home, and then they'd be responsible for, you know, going and getting a follow-up test.
You also mentioned in the list about substitute teachers and things like that. Too far up to think about?
Well, I mean, we're, we're looking to see what comes back with the teachers and those that are reluctant to come back because of pre-existing or phantom measures or things. So I think next week, we're gonna have a much better idea of where our staffing goals are. The one thing that we've been doing with these interviews is we're stockpiling names and keeping names, and we, when we have ninety applicants, and if they're young people that just wanna get in, we have a certified person in as a substitute or a paraprofessional. So the requirements that we have to hire, I have to hire four assistants for the nurses that will sit and be monitors if a child does get in situative. We have to isolate them in a closed room. That person has to be fully down in the PPE to wait until the parent comes. The nurse can't be that person. So right from the get-go, there's four people that we have to hire to do that. The other four that we're, we don't have, we're looking to, I mean, sanitation, people that will walk around and clean and do all of that. So we're not really bolstering our parent population yet until we get a better idea.
And as far as the cleaning's going, there'll be someone that will oversee, maybe spot check, just to make sure he's getting that, that's, Bill?
Well, I'm assuming that we're responsible.
The day, well, the day to study. The job will be very different. Our day to study, it'll be a very different look to their responsibilities now. Their responsibilities are gonna be out in the classrooms, in the hallways, in the bathrooms, making sure, keep an eye on that, you know, now when children eat lunch in K through nine, they're gonna be in the classroom. So we are going to generate a great deal of trash in the classroom that's gonna have to be put in the hallway and then picked up and brought out to the dumpsters during the day. We're gonna have We're gonna have to make sure that we have a system in place. And these people that are coming in to help with the cleaning will be part of that process. So the daytime person will be part of that collection team with this other person. And then by dropping and starting our second shift earlier, the second half of the day, we're gonna pick up more bodies in every school. And that's just to do the cleaning, to wash the, you know, desktops down. I've ordered, you know, three or 400 spray bottles for every classroom, wipes for every classroom, disposable wipes for every classroom. Students are gonna take on an active role of cleaning their desk between periods or when they transition to go to another class.
So they will be allowed to do the alcohol wipes?
Yes, yeah, and we're doing safe wipes and wipes that, you know, it's really pretty simplistic.
Well, right now we're doing the alcohol sanitizer.
Maybe it'll rub off at home, too.
And the teachers will need the spray bottles, we don't want kids spraying each other, you know, but just things like that. There'll be chill out home stations in every classroom. There'll be stations in the hallways. There'll be gallon jars on every entry point. There'll be plexiglass at every entry point, there'll be plexiglass in every main office. We're buying dividers to do small group with identified students that can still sit and be protected by a shield. I mentioned the 300 shields that I've already purchased, masks for everyone.
Did you get the clear masks?
Clear, full face, shield, a chin, shield.
Nobody, the masks are clear?
No. No, just.
They had ones that are clear, like the mask, because of for hearing impaired, they developed them, so I don't.
Yeah, these are, these are fully eye covering, nose covering now.
So next month, can we have on the agenda, it might take some time, that we go through a brief summary of the plans for each school?
Sure.
I think if parents get the memo, they're gonna need a question and answer, this is the best form.
And that'll be a part of our live chats, too. So our next wave is gonna go on. And then we'll break down these school plans. And then we'll have a date where, you know, that's what it'll be. The entire meeting will be about questions and answers.
If we could also do it here, that'd be great, too. Are those meetings gonna be taped?
Well, like that in the back, we'll be shooting them live and hopefully. Do you know when we're gonna be able to go live on here? No, no. So it's in the process right now where this room will be set up like Town Hall. We have a grant coming in so that we'll be able to do live broadcasts.
Exactly.
Just like Town Hall through here, so they will be taped as well.
Just because if you have a question and answer, it's not, you know, could refer back to it where these meetings are taped, so people can refer back to it if they have a question. So I want them to have as many resources as possible. And then if the questions still aren't answered, they know who are gonna vote for the correct answer. Or otherwise, everyone's in the phones and channels are gonna blow up. And people will get frustrated and upset and they'll be on edge and nervous and, you know, for one reason or another, right?
Your Town Hall meetings, you, they're taped and then they're archived, and they go on.
All right, and on Facebook, so.
On Facebook, yeah. So ours will be the same thing?
Same thing?
Yep, obviously, no, no, not tonight.
One question, just trying to think ahead. In the years past, we've had hurricanes which closed down the store, the schools, like in September for a few days. Is that gonna, instead of closing down, oozing days, that would go right to remote learning for everyone?
Well, that's, that's a question that, first things first with what it's gonna look like. Secondary to that is if we have snow days. Yeah, and you know, the commissioner's not worried about that right now. He's made a crystal clear, we're going to 177 days, 38, so professional development. And his message before, until today, I don't know what the buzz is about the hybrid schedule, is that, you know, we're holding kids accountable to a full school year looking like 177 days. And that's what I'm playing now. As for snow days or hurricanes and things like that, I'm, we'll see if we can get the authority to do it. What happens is there, it comes down to equity. And if other districts don't have the capacity to give the computers to the kids, and they have to make that day up because they can't meet the needs of the students, it's not equitable to or to a parent who can meet the needs. So that's where it becomes an issue.
We get concerned about the younger children who honestly know they may be in daycare or maybe grandparents and they cannot access their technology, so it's a lot to think about.
Well, that was apart from the start, too. The kids that couldn't access. Or the people that they couldn't access, or the people that were doing the daycare.
Right.
Didn't, couldn't help the kids, so.
Right, so we purchased another lot of promos, you know, an excess of 200 for another grade. So I'm equipped for grades two or three.
Well, maybe some of the daycares tried, but they can't do fifth grade math.
So, North Ramers.
I could tell by your eyes.
Of course.
Any other questions? This is, this is gonna be ongoing. This is just the start of many more conversations as we progress through this and have a better idea of what we're.
But is anything emergent that comes up between now and our next board meeting that totally changes the shift of your plan? We'd be willing to have a special meeting so that the board can be involved and understand what's going on.
Sure, absolutely.
I think it's important now that we're knowledgeable, especially as we're approached through town and we know what's going on, so we can help ease any anxiety that's brewing and direct people to the right places.
Sure. If everyone's comfortable, we would have to do, you know, 24-hour notice at least of posted and get you here. And if you're comfortable doing it here, it doesn't have to be video, obviously. If we had enough notice to get Victor here and wanted to do it.
We just can't go anywhere now.
Well, he's quarantined here. Yeah, we can do that, absolutely. Okay, that being said, we'll keep you posted with communications and what it's gonna look like on our school sites and our main site, and trying to keep that communication line open and active. Town manager, pending banners. I have Bill Chery here, who's gonna speak to item setter on the agenda. There's nothing really current right now, other than I attended a ad hoc building meeting on Tuesday night? Tuesday night, I think it was Tuesday night. And that you're here as the liaison, so maybe you wanna take that over and just kind of update.
But would that be during committee meetings?
Um, yeah, okay, whatever you want. There's nothing going.
There really is no committee meetings.
There's no committee meetings.
Right.
All right, Brett, what do you have?
Okay, my understanding is that they showed up to do the, they showed up to do the brickwork at the auditorium early and that they were working on that and the flashing and the ceiling. We didn't really come up with anything for the, the NVIS. And as far as the school, the high school, there were still some questions that committee members had, and they had asked for some more information, more of a spreadsheet that broke it down a little bit more so that they could see what would be the cost for rental, what would be the cost for new. And there was a discussion about the placement of where it was. That was still the only placement there. And actually, Bill and Fran went out and did a measurement today. And like where the placement would be, because the discussion that was going on was like keeping the quad and trying to put the media center in the middle. You already have the walls, you just have to do the floor and ceiling and whatever you do inside.
I'm sorry, what, are you talking about redesigning the building? I don't understand, you're talking about the diamond, keeping the diamond.
The diamond, all right.
But it's not, I didn't think it was a job to design a building, so.
They had questions, because it went in as a renovate as new or as new. So they still had questions, which way to go. And so the questions were like, if we renovate as new? That's why they want a breakdown of what the money was for both of them. They wanted more specific breakdown. And so one of the things that came up, if they renovated as new, if they just kept the diamond and made those and did a media center and then added on new to that or alongside, because if you connected it, then we couldn't have the square footage. And then someone else mentioned about the gym, the one that we have, I guess has been redone. It's larger than the one that would be in the new building. So these are just some questions that came up from the members that they still wanted to get more information, because it was put to the state either as rental or new. So they wanted some more information.
Yeah, but, but rent, more information, yes, but like deciding what to do with the diamond and adding a media center, we have a plane we paid for for renovate as new.
Gina, I'm with you, we spent $75,000, okay? $25,000, which is above and beyond what we originally agreed to. We hired professionals to do this. The board voted 7-0 for a new building. The townspeople spoke, came out to the hearing, wanted a new building. Council members played the prices right. I mean, if it was $300, if it was $400, if it was $500. I mean, to go backwards now, we're operating, this needs to be decided by December 1st.
That's, we're looking at all their options. And honestly, the land that we were gonna build on, we didn't know had a big water content until they did the bore.
Well.
So when we voted full to build new, we didn't have the boring information.
But you voted as new when you had the boring information, no?
I think, I think the bottom line is. I, I think the bottom line is that this is now out of our control, so we can rehashing it over and over. But the reality is, there is an ad hoc committee that is doing additional due diligence. Their job is not to necessarily say what their town council is going to move forward in. They're giving, they're investigating a variety of possibilities. We can moan and complain all we like, we can say our opinions, we can be out of the cereal, but the bottom line is, it is what it is. This committee is going to be doing its due diligence, and we have to provide as much information as we can as possible. And we have to work together and try to get this new school to happen and voted on before December 1st. That's just the reality of it. We can help give guidance, we can help provide additional data, we can help go find things and new resources, but that, the reality is, it's not changing. It's, it's just not changing, so.
Well, I think it's, it's important that the next step is to have the state come down. And if the state come down, comes down and says, we're not renovating that building, we're not gonna reimburse you for anything, the direction is gonna change. And you have two existing, three existing structures on that property right now. And Mr. Malik, I know, is up there and, you know, works with, can you hear me, Rusty?
Yes.
And, and, you know, does this for his, his career in working with these engineers and these groups to begin. So he's charged, they're charged with giving us advisement on these types of things. So as, you know, Chairman Popovich said, let's get them down, let's let the state look at it. It doesn't really do a lot right now to, I'm not looking for this ad hoc committee to redesign anything. Quite frankly, we've paid a lot of money for that. I think we need them to say, okay, the state has said this. For educational reasons, you're saying you need this because you're the ones who are gonna be living in this space. And the last thing we wanna do is get into another NVIS.
And I think that's exactly what I'm trying to.
And I say that because many that were there are still there that are part of NVIS. So let's put it out there with what it is. And NVIS was built on that and it was designed with a gym that you can't participate in. So we need to do this.
I think everybody knows the short points of past projects, and I don't think it needs to be continually rehashed. Because no one wants a new high school more than I do. I have spent hours upon hours being board of ed chair and pursuing a new high school. And I have one year left on my term. And I would like nothing more than for the town council to vote for a new high school and I can sail into this sunset. That would be my ideal dream. But I also know that if I keep bucking them and I don't work collaboratively with them, that is not hurting anybody except those 500 students and how many other teachers that walk through those doors. So if they want me to jump through a hoop of fire to get them the information they need, well, I'm up to the challenge certainly, and I would love to collaborate in any way. Now, I am not on the committee as a representative because I simply don't have the time. But I have also said that I would be available at any time to go if I had to come to a meeting or two or if I could be available by phone. I, I think now we have to shift our focus and just get it done, you know?
And I believe that when it's all said and done, you're gonna get into a new high school.
Well, they've gotta go through the process. And we need to help them, and we need to help them through it, whatever they need to be. And we have to keep them in open mind.
The council has the same information that you've got, that's the difference.
But they're trying to do the due diligence, and we're just trying to get some.
And everybody's trying to do their.
And they don't, they don't want another, and, but if it's something that, you know, if this is, like someone says, it's good bones, keeping that, maybe doing a little bit of the old and adding the new. That's, that's, I think, where they're looking at, but I don't know totally.
Let's let the state come in, and then, because we can have so many conversations, but it's up to them. And if they come in and say A or B, that's what we gotta rely on.
Yep, it's a process, it's gone through the process.
When the state comes in, there was a request that maybe some of the ad hoc members be there when the state.
Oh, I can guess who will be there in a moment, gladly, welcome back. Because they, they're in the mix and they know it. And that would make it easier for us if they are there.
Yeah, they would like that.
Absolutely, the invitation will be accepted.
Yeah, well, I know the two that I would wanna have.
Speaking of invitations, because we were actually on the town manager section, I had sent to me my requesting, asking for kind of policy, I don't know if you want it. So again, I just wanna reiterate that I think that's a really good idea to do before. I know we all have a lot on our plates, but we did hire consultants to give us recommendations for collaboratively working as a town to report. So I think we should probably go forward with that in some way, shape or form, put together a five-year plan, maybe, of what we're going to do with technologies. We're gonna, you know, purchase and how we're gonna utilize them and how it would impact staff.
All right, so moving, moving forward. Anything else on town manager communication? No, no good, okay. Auditorium boiler, good process, that was asked to be out. I know that Bill Chery went and spoke at the council meeting last week.
I have not spoken to the council yet, or you've spoken this week?
This week, okay. So Bill is gonna go and update them on the process. And the auditorium is kind of this nebulous zone that it proves who does it belong to, where does it play out? But obviously, when we replace something that's over the $7,500 bid limit, and you can argue whether it's new or it's a broken piece of equipment, it goes up to bid. So the communication that we're trying to work on as well is coming from town council or?
It is not coming from town council. It's not, I sent the capital fund and I confirmed that, the email, the partner was on it, you were on it, Bill was on it, and so it was bringing a roll of the council. It's, it's coming out of our budget, we can put it out to bid. It is not collecting town council funds and they don't have it identified as capital.
But sometimes in the past, when we've replaced anything in the auditorium, it's come out of the rental monies that they've taken in, that's why they take the rental money.
I confirmed, I confirmed it, they're not addressing it, it's not addressed in our capital. And unfortunately.
Well, if something, if something breaks, let's just say we go in tomorrow and the high school boiler goes, and it's over $7,500, it's not gonna be in our capital, but what?
But it doesn't go, it doesn't go to town council.
Well, the bidding, the bidding process, we have to go out and do the bidding process. The question is when it's the auditorium, because it's not a school. It's a town building that's used, that takes in rental income and is used by the school and the town collectively. So really, it comes down to communication, who's gonna do it? And then it comes down to who's gonna pay for it. So I think the bid is at $23,000?
That, yes, and we got, yes.
You know, for.
It seemed pretty clear through the emails to the town council that we're going back and forth, that they weren't paying for it. Am I mistaken, or?
I was just looking, my email to them was, hey, guidance, do you have a template to use for bidding?
Right, but then I kept going back and forth with it, and it didn't sound like, except flyers didn't even on our agenda. Did the board not even know about this? I said, I didn't know about this.
Yeah, well, the boiler, like I said, can go in at any time. We replaced the carpet.
It was hit break originally. I think a broken one.
I don't know.
I thought it was a break. Why did the boiler literally break?
Oh, we, it was probably sometime in mid-February, where we had the first failure. Then we did a temporary repair to it. Since then, the repair has failed, and that's when we, we. Since then, the repair has failed and that's when we, we were told that the parts for that, the cast iron part of the boiler itself are no longer available from burning, you would have to buy a whole new section.
Okay, got it. So it broke in February, but it was repaired and then it failed after that.
Another section would fail.
Like recently?
Yes.
So it's one of those, it'd be nice if we could say with the town, listen, if you have some rental money, can you help assist with paying for it? Because twenty-three thousand dollars is not something that you-
They're like-
Or that you don't plan for it because if you go, like I said, tomorrow the boiler and high school could go and then we're, you know, that's why you have contingency.
So go do it if you feel like that, that's appropriate. I, I just don't have a whole lot of expectation that that's going to be paid for out of the town.
Why don't I reach out? I'll reach out to my colleagues.
I think it probably would be a good idea to make policy.
We've done that with other projects.
Want to interrupt the bid specs to purchasing the carpet. Anthony Esposito questioned me where I thought the money was coming from. And I told him it was not in the capital budget, it was probably going to come out of my repair rate on Ford's side. And the bid spec was left with the purchasing professionals. And we thought that they, with the spec that we had written, were going to put the spec, put the front end and the back end on the bid and put the bid on the street. The later conversation that I had with the town manager and the, and the bidding, the purchasing agent was, they did not want to do it. They wanted to give it back to the Board of Education to bid for us to bid.
Right.
Previously, two years ago, maybe three years ago, I was directed from our office to bring my bids to the bidding professionals.
So what's the procedure?
Before that, we did the bid. I had the supervisor of finance and services and myself, we would put the bid package together and Mr. Wonicki would review it and then we would put it on the street. So if it was something that was ours and it wasn't capital, we used to bid. But then I was directed to bring it to town.
So one of the things that I would make a recommendation, and again, this is operational, so it's probably a little out of my scope as a member of the Board of Education, but if I were anybody in leadership on either side, I think it's probably time to update that procedure manual so everybody knows what to do. Because I think that's one of the largest pieces of this communication is because there's nothing to reference. Like you're going by your past experience, maybe an old procedure, and then something changes and you're not updated on it. And that's not fair to you, it's not fair to the people at Town Hall. Like I think really, this is probably a long-term project in the, in the making and that we really need to sit down and look at our past procedures, see if they are best practices and rewrite them. So go to town council if that's what you were told to do. I'm just not sure if you're going to have success, but if that's what you were told to do, I certainly shouldn't discourage you.
I was, I was not directed from the Board of Education to go and talk to the town council. I was directed by the town council to come and talk to them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So if you're, if that's, I'm certainly not going to dissuade you if that's what you were advised.
We don't really need a boiler, do we, Bill?
We got one. If you didn't want the other one, we're okay.
Oh, gosh.
You only own it when it breaks. And that's the discrepancy that always is. It's not, it's only our building when something breaks. And everything is working and functioning, it's, it's not ours. Okay, North Ramford High School project, I think we said about that. Pressing issues for school reopening. All the buildings, we talked about the deep cleaning and what's going on. The elevator has been repaired, it's functioning, works fine. I landed it twice and I landed in the right spot and returned to the right spot. It's urgent.
Yay.
All the, all of the air conditioning units in the school are being cleaned. We're looking at all of the window structures in the high school to make sure that they're able to open as fast as we possibly can without losing a window from the second floor or the first floor. We have replaced the flooring in the library. We had a, a heating cooling unit that let go and put rust water all over the floor, so that's been stripped and re tiled. That was done this week. It'll be waxed and ready to go for next week. Really, everything, I don't know how much detail you want in updates for the high school. The biggest uses is that we have satisfied the requirements with the elevator. And that's something that everyone should feel really good about. That, you know, hopefully we start the school year live and in person and that is functioning. We have a few units that we're looking to add to the high school for cooling on the second floor. I don't know what else you really are looking for from information. If Bill is here, is anything specifically? We're going to do some striking in our parking lots to out just for safety reasons. We do those every couple of years. We've done a lot of landscaping around in the district and tried to clean up. I know with Jerome Harrison, we're cleaning up their courtyard and we can do it in the high school, just, you know, things that are-
I think the high school had, obviously is in need of new repair. I'm just hoping that some of the things, we can get a little year with our-
You won't, I can tell you right now. The kids are going to come back and they're going to start using the lavatories and they're going to start getting backups. I mean, Bill, can you guarantee that we're not going to get a backup?
Well, how about we being proactive to try to-
Yeah, I mean, we can, we work with Sonicall and we, we get into those pipes and we camera view them and we do everything we can. And then kids put things in there they shouldn't put in and then they settle, back down and we have to get them. So I'm hoping and we're, you know-
Can you put up, like, posters saying, do not put, do, 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 and, I mean, I know it sounds stupid, but maybe if they read it, I know it sounds, but just print it, laminate it and stick it up on the walls and see if that helps.
I mean, we have, we have signals for, don't read this, really, like, yeah, we have, we have all those signs.
Yeah.
The kid who's going to put something in the toilet is maybe put the sign in the toilet. That's my word.
Yeah, but I'm just saying to be proactive, it might like, you know, for like girls, they know not to put certain things in the toilet. And that was like a topic of conversation at dinner when they, and my boys had no clue. Like they thought there's certain things that could go. And I'm not getting into detail, but it was just interesting, the concept of sometimes of a boy's brain when, you know, and I'm not saying it's just boys that are doing it, I'm just saying within the conversation at home, it was very interesting.
I'll have administrators.
So maybe to just remind you, remind, you know, all the kids that it should only be toilet paper and in the bathroom and nothing else.
Scott, TVES, do they have like air conditioners for handlers or no?
Well, John is going to be putting in a number of them, starting probably next week. So he's going to do one, find out the number of hours it takes and then he's going to start chipping away, probably, I think ten is the goal there.
Fifteen.
Is that his?
Yeah, no, there's a number of them that are going to be replaced. So that's, that's the next big thing. He's been running around getting other things done for the COVID stuff.
So something like that, will the filters because of COVID have to be replaced more often or?
Well, I think the daytime guys will be vigilant and checking them. Just like at the high school with the window units, they're dropping the faces, looking at them, you can spray them out and clean them and put them back in. I mean, they really, they want fresh air coming through windows, but some of our windows don't open. So we have central air and that's the worst thing in a couple of the buildings because that recirculates. Clean them, turn the air just now.
No, because you can't wear a mask, it's hot.
Right.
I mean, the kids are going to like overheat if they have to wear a mask, no air conditioning.
No, right, we, listen, there's only so much we can do. And that's, we're going to do everything we can and- Any pressing issues, questions that?
Then before you move on to new business, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda of the July sixteenth, twenty twenty Board of Education meeting. Second? Discussion?
What? Oh, yeah.
We'll get a vote and then I can make the motion.
Um, all in favor?
To amend the-
Aye, aye.
Aye.
So then I'd like to make a motion to add discussion and action under Agenda Item Six C, Leaves, and to add Agenda Item I, Negotiations for Discussion and Possible Action.
A second? Discussion? Though, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I just wanted to do that while they're still on there.
So I sent, you should have cave information, it was just a brief handout flyer of cave services, see what they do. And I know that came out of the last meeting, so I'm going to turn that back over to you. Is there anything else that you're requesting from us other than what we have disseminated tonight?
Nope.
Okay.
I knew that, is this the one?
No, I've got seven thirty.
Hold on. I know that last month, we spoke about joining cave. And I know that our kind of trial membership ends, it's sixteen, I think it is today as a matter of fact. But Ben's wanted some time to get his due diligence done. Marcy, did he touch base with you?
He did, he did. And I think, I'm going to text him right now, but I think he was, I think he was okay.
Okay. I just, I just don't want to, I mean, I want to move forward, obviously the vote for it because we helped out, but I want to also make sure that he doesn't have any questions. And I know it's a little unconventional how we're all moving through Zoom and personal texts, whatever, but-
He did look into it, I do know he did.
Do you have any questions of us or are you ready to make a motion, vote?
I'm ready to make a motion. I've done my homework, over and over again on this one. But I've also had the experience of getting all the dirty mail over the last three months or so and not everyone's had that experience.
If, if you're ready to vote, then we'll just contact them tomorrow if they're not going to settle, you missed the call. So on basis of vote, we'll reach out to them and see if we can continue with that rate that they are.
It should have been forty-five.
Yeah, I know I've been communicating back and forth with their secretary. They're working remotely as well, so.
Yeah, and it's hard, she was telling me she's having a hard time.
Yeah, I can tell, we'll reach out tomorrow. That's if you decide.
He didn't get back to me yet, but I do know that he did look into it and he got some information. I mean, we put it off a month for him.
Okay.
I think we, I think that was fair.
Okay. Can I have a motion to join cave for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year?
I'll make a motion. That's second. Carolyn made the motion that second.
Okay, I can hear you, sorry. Carolyn made the motion now and that's second. Any further discussion? Mary, can we have a roll call vote?
You sure can. Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Candelaora?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Bolzamo?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Cynthia Rose?
Yes.
Okay, we will reach out tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. And that is it.
Because we have to go to our-
Make a motion for-
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, ask for Section One dash two-two-five of the Connecticut General Statutes, as permitted by Section One dash two-hundred-six-A of the Connecticut General Statutes, discuss Agenda Items Six C, Leaves, and Item I, Negotiations. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Bruce, do you-
Just give me one minute on this, Mary. I have this. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-year leave request of a certified staff member for the twenty twenty-one school year without pay.
A second?
Marcy made the motion, Mary. Carolyn seconded. Discussion? I'll make a roll call while, Mary.
You got it. You ready?
Yeah.
Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Candelaora?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janice Bolzamo?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Cynthia Rose?
Cindy. Cindy's on mute. Kind of unmuted.
I'm mute, Cindy.
I can't unmute her. I don't have the power to unmute Cindy.
Hold on. Fallacy, Mary.
Mute her, so?
I'm sure it's on mute, but she's curious.
Cindy, can you unmute yourself?
There she is. Nope.
Did she think the meeting was over? Did she not realize we were coming out here to vote?
She's online now, she didn't exit the meeting.
All right.
There you are. Don't answer my phone, I was calling.
Shauna, you are on mute, she said. I wasn't on mute.
That's what she said, Shauna, you are on mute.
No, that was earlier.
Oh, okay.
That's earlier. I was like, oh. Cindy, how do you want to go on this?
Cindy?
Agreed. All right.
It's a yes.
It's a yes. We're going to go with a yes. Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement between the North Ramford Board of Education and Local thirteen oh three dash two-twenty of Council Number Four, AFSCME, Nurses for the period covering July first, two thousand and twenty, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
A second?
Jana made the motion. Carolyn seconded. Can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Candelaora?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Janet Bolzamo?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Abstained.
Cynthia Rose?
Yes.
Is that everyone?
Yeah, make a motion to-
Before you adjourn, I want to, I want to thank Cindy and Shauna for serving on the committee. As you know, we are in the process of negotiating four contracts. The nurses want to be the first one done and moving forward. And this new format working through Zoom has been very, I can see, you know how it is, just to do a meeting like this, do negotiations. John and Cindy, you lived through that and then we actually came in live and we seem to really get a lot more done that way. And we're going to try to move forward with the next three negotiations, doing it more